Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee of the 29th of November 2022. It's 9:01 at the start of this meeting. I'll call councillor attendance. We have councillor Kunsman, councillor Milligan, councillor Fekner, councillor Doyle, councillor Tully, councillor John Eke, councillor Ireland. The deputy mayor has let us know he's been delayed by about 10 minutes, so we will be expecting him soon. I have no other apologies. Does anyone have any leave of absences they'd like to notify us of? No. Then we'll move on to the Ignorance of Country. And if City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest on the matters on the agenda? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I make a declaration in relation to item five. It's a precautionary declaration that's in relation to the Tallagalla Cemetery. I declare that in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item five, titled 'Concept Design Master Plan Tallagalla Cemetery', insofar as I'm appointed by the state government as a trustee of the Goodness Cemetery. I don't receive any, well, I wouldn't receive any personal or financial benefit in relation to this matter, but as I made a declaration recently in relation to the Ipswich Cemetery, I don't believe there's any conflict. I'll formally make that declaration today.
Thank you, councillor. Just to confirm, do you have any financial or personal benefit on the decision with the Tallagalla Cemetery?
No, not at all. I don't believe that there's any operational connection between the two cemeteries.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll move that councillor Paul Tully participates and votes on item five of the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, titled 'Concept Design Master Plan Tallagalla Cemetery', because there is no personal financial benefit to councillor Tully, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any discussion? Other questions of councillor Tully? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, noting that councillor Tully has not voted. Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you. We now move on to business outstanding, and there is none. The now look at matters to be resolved under delegation, and there are none. So we now move on for matters of recommendation to council. And I'd like to highlight item two, which is the renewal of liquid petroleum gas for Bundamba and Goodna Aquatic Centres. The CEO sent us an email on Sunday noting that, under our terms of reference, that particular item should have actually gone to the Governance and Transparency Committee. So I'd like to move a motion that item two, renewal of LPG for Bundamba and Goodna Aquatic Centres, go to the Governance and Transparency Committee today. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion? Thank you. In that case, I put the vote to the vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item three, the future Ripley Road corridor upgrade between Canyam Highway and the St Teneri Highway in Ripley. The recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. May I ask a council officer some questions on this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Before we do that, could I just raise an issue around conflicts for this particular matter?
Right, yes.
Just seeking, I guess, some guidance from the CEO. I'm just concerned that item number three does not name any of the impacted residents that have been identified by the developer. We were told that the developer's been working with potential impacted property owners. Now, that information isn't within our papers, so one may argue there may not, there wouldn't be a conflict because we're not privy to that information. However, I would also argue that it's potentially in the public domain. So I guess I'd...
Are you asking about a conflict of interest, or are you asking about the quality of the report and the information?
Conflict of interest, if any of us. The report does not name the impacted residents.
Okay.
This matter is...
So we don't know if someone that we know might be a...
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think what's happening, CEO, is that we don't know, some of us may have a close personal relationship with some of those who were impacted and...
I know we're only receiving and noting the report. It's at a very early stage. I'm just concerned there will be absolutely information in the public domain, a bit of chat within the community, if you like, about impacted property owners. And I just, so why weren't we, is there a reason why those residents aren't named in the report? Is because we haven't identified the exact boundaries?
And I think in the past, we've also had the list of a confidential attachment with the title searches as well.
My, my view would be that, so we do know the identified properties, the land. I am happy to check with the relevant general manager, but my view would be that this is, to foreshadow, the proposed acquisitions that will follow the due process and that it is a receiver note report. So you are not being asked to make a decision in relation to the acquisitions. You are just being provided with an update, that you're being asked to note in relation to this approach. But if you have any concerns about anyone you know that lives in that area, and I know it's difficult if you don't know the names of the residents, then I'd encourage you to abstain or not participate in the, in the vote. It is a receiver note report, so if we don't have a majority, then I don't think that is a particular concern. But councillor Tully, did you have a thought of you?
Yeah, just for a long time, we've always considered, based on the advice we've received, that if a report is just to receive a note, there's no substantial decision, it's just to receive and note, they're the exact words, that that doesn't and can't raise a conflict of interest because there's no decision being made.
Yeah. I guess, I guess, and if this does proceed, if anyone does have a conflict, they'll just declare it ASAP. Councillor Fekner?
Just with regards to the report and the recommendation to receive a note, in reading the report, I came to the conclusion that we're doing a little bit more than that. We're kind of establishing our strategic intent. And there's kind of a secondary recommendation in the last line of the conclusion that it is recommended that council note and support the ongoing commitment too. So is it actually a little bit more than just receiving and noting? Because this is a really important piece of work that council will undertake. It shows our leadership on this particular issue within the priority development area, and I think that it's an indication of our strategic intent and to support this process going forward. So is it actually a little bit more than just receive a note, is the question?
Noting the words in the conclusion, the recommendation is, as the recommendation is, so that is, that is effectively the resolution of council. So it is a little less relevant, what is in the conclusion. So with the legislation, as soon as you become aware of a potential conflict of interest, that is when you must declare. And I guess in your defence, you're not aware at this point of any matters that you need to declare.
Oh, Mayor, I know people that live out there. I'm not sure which blocks of land along Ripley Road, so I'll declare my conflict of interest.
I guess the thing is, just because you know people doesn't mean necessarily, I guess. So, but if you wish, you've now said that you'd like to declare, so would you like to declare?
I don't know which blocks of land they own.
And I guess it comes down to whether it's you have a personal or financial interest or benefit?
Okay. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, Sheila Ireland, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict, declarable? Inform the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item three, in that I know people who have land out in the Ripley area. I'm not sure whether they own the land up onto Ripley Road, but do I have to give the name of the person? Because that's what it's asking here. I've just known these people for a very long time.
Okay.
As a result of my conflict of interest, I will, I invite the other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process.
Thank you. I think councillor Tully, you had to say something there?
I just need to think through how else. Look, I think the, it is an extremely remote connection, just knowing someone. And particularly with the recommendation being that the, the report be received and noted, I'm prepared to move that councillor participates and votes on the item as she has no personal or financial benefit in the matter, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Councillor, I might just ask, obviously, we don't know which part of Ripley, and I'm not sure. Do you have a, would you, would you have a personal or a financial benefit if this does proceed or doesn't? Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the matter? I put the motion that councillor Tully's put forward to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, knowing that councillor Ireland did not vote. Thank you. So we come back to the matter of the report be received and contents noted. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr Tabullo. So note that we've talked about the plan design work of Ripley Road between Trigona Drive and Binney's Road, as well as Sector Fisher Road from Monterey Road and Nevis Road. What's this particular report actually asking the council to note?
Mayor and councillors, the report, as we've heard in preliminary discussions, it is a very high-level strategic report, just providing information to yourselves and obviously the interested parties in the Ripley Valley, that council is preparing to undertake some work to secure the ultimate width of Ripley Road in that particular location, to ensure or to allow for the development to proceed there, unhindered by the fact that the road corridor may not be wide enough and under, under ownership other than council.
Thank you. Councillor Fekner?
In the report, it says that council does not actively undertake property acquisition for a project until such time as funding has been secured. Is that a policy position, or is that just a general rule of thumb? Because if, I mean, if it's in policy or procedure that we don't do that, and we're actually deviating from that, I think the recommendation to receive a note isn't strong enough to signal our support for deviating from that process.
I would have to take some, some, the question I'll notice in part about whether it's a written policy per se, it is a, a practice that we don't normally get involved in, simply because the road corridors are of sufficient width and the construction work is allowed to, to just get on and happen. In this instance, given the age of Ripley Road when it was first gazetted, it is obviously too narrow to accommodate the, the future of six-laning or four-laning, whatever it might be in certain locations, and so property acquisition has to occur. Under normal circumstances, the proponents for development that front that road would be the owners of the land and therefore be dedicating the land for their development. But in this case, at this point in time, there are a number of property owners out there that aren't part of any development application process, but their land, presence of their land creates the, the situation whereby there is an inability for us to achieve the ultimate goal, and that is the full widening of, of Ripley Road. And so therefore, council in this instance is taking this situation of the leadership and wanting to ensure that the road, road corridor is available to allow the road to be ultimately constructed by the, by the development industry.
Yeah, I, I support that. I think that it's really important work that we show leadership in that way. But the question remains, if, if we're deviating from policy, I think we need to understand whether, whether that's happening or not.
As I said, councillor, I don't, I don't believe it's a written policy. It's, it's a practice that, as I said before, council hasn't been in this situation. We are doing it out of a leadership role. I don't think it's, it's contravening any specific policy as such.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Doyle?
Yeah, so can I just clarify further on that, Mr Tabullo? Given that it's outside, I guess, our usual steps or, or procedure and potentially out of sync, is there a risk that we may acquire a greater parcel of, of land than that is, than that is needed? I, I do note that, you know, the paper talks about... Sorry, that the boundaries may, may change, can alter the alignment requirements in the detailed design. So I'm just, I guess where I'm coming from. I'm concerned if we are getting in sooner than we ordinarily would, could we potentially end up acquiring?
More end, is what you're concerned about.
Than is actually needed.
As part of the, the negotiation process, we obviously are wanting just to achieve that, that area of land that's required to facilitate the, the road corridor. So it might be a variety of widths coming off individual properties in the corridor area. In those negotiations, an owner may say they would prefer to sell the whole property rather than part of the acquisition of just the, the front portion. If those, if those scenarios arise, then that obviously comes back to council for further consideration as to the appetite to acquire something above and beyond what's needed for the road corridor. But we're not going out there saying anything other than we need the road corridor to be 42 metres or 44 metres wide, and from certain properties, we need a parcel of land.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Tabullo? Thank you, Mr Tabullo. So I move that the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. I'll move on to discussion, and I guess I'm supporting this for a few reasons. One is, it is a PDA, and in discussions, whether it's with EDQ or developers, they, they are needing that surety. We are, have, there is a housing crisis. Certainly, the developers in the Ripley Valley PDA area, after that leadership from us to say that we were very committed to this. So this has my full support. I think it's very forward-thinking, especially we are waiting on a decision by the state government on the Catalyst Infrastructure Fund to see if we've been successful. We understand that we'll hear next month, so I think this is probably a good precursor for that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this matter? Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor and I are very aware that the state government is trying to provide facilities out there, and we need to be able to get the land, in particular for the Monterey-Ripley Road intersection. So we want, we want to see these facilities taken out for a, a growing area, and I fully support the, the report.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Before I move into item four, I've just noticed that I missed the confirmation of minutes.
Confirmation of minutes, yes.
Yeah, so I apologise for that in my excitement to move on. So I'll move to item one, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee of the 10th of November, so I'll move those. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Doyle. Any queries on the, or amendments to those minutes? No, I'll put them to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, they are carried. We now move on to item four, which is the potential sale of Swift Sports Club located over Part 95A of the Brisbane Road Bival. I'm just conferring with the Chair of the GTC. We also, you know, by the CEO on Sunday, said that that actual item should have gone to the Governance and Transparency Committee. But I do note there's only six councillors on that particular committee. So I'm just checking with the deputy mayor if he would prefer that paper to go to the ordinary council meeting next week or to the Governance and Transparency Committee later today.
Look, I think it should, it's a matter that will ultimately needed to be discussed by the, the full council. My preference would have been for it to go to the Governance Um, my preference would have been for it to go to the Governance and Transparency Committee because there's still discussion that needs to take place on it. Um, but, you know, depends on what the rest of the council thinks. It's not me alone to determine that it's ended up in the wrong committee meeting and we've got to deal with it.
Well, I, I, I might prefer it for it to go to the right committee. So it's either going to go to the GTC, Governance and Transparency Committee, or to the ordinary council, uh, next week. Yes, Councillor Tully?
Yes, Mayor. It's a difficult sort of situation if it's, uh, on the wrong committee, but, um, it is a substantial matter. Um, and whether or not there's any benefit in going to, um, a committee of six, which you have referred to, rather than all of the councillors, and then leapfrogging back to the council meeting next week. I, I think it's probably best, um, where the substantial debate and where the substantial decision, because that committee can't make a decision except to, um, put a recommendation forward to the committee. So I'll move that the matter be referred to the meeting of council on, uh, the eighth of December, twenty twenty-two.
Yep, thank you. Um, I'm happy to, to second that. Any discussion on that? Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Uh, note in the room, it's myself, Councillor Cornsman, Councillor Mulligan, Councillor Fekner, Councillor Doyle, Councillor Tully, Councillor John and Councillor Ireland have voted for. Those against, those abstaining. Thank you. And Councillor, Deputy Mayor has abstained. We now move on to item five, which is the Concept Design Master Plan of Tallagalla Cemetery. And the recommendation is that the Tallagalla Cemetery Concept Design Master Plan included as attachment to be approved. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer if any questions in regards to this? Yes, Councillor Ireland?
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Is that your name and your job title, please?
I was just, the green light's there. I think that's on. Uh, good morning, Mayor and councillors. Alicia Conorton, Manager of Compliance.
Thank you. Councillor Ireland?
Miss Conorton, um, some years ago, I was, um, on the Cemetery Trust, uh, not Cemetery Trust, the Cemetery Committee for Council. And, um, it was reported that there was a little bit of slippage on the headstones as it goes down the hill. Um, I'm just wondering, are we going to take that into, you've, you've said that some of the areas are very steep in your report. Just wondering if we're actually going to sort of build up little walls to try and flatten out the land a bit as it goes right down so that we don't have any slippage.
Yeah, that is, that is noted in the concept design and I guess the, the design does have, um, retaining walls and a stepped approach to, to take best use of the topography of the land, um, but then also, um, create level buildable sites.
Any other questions, Mrs. Cotton, Conorton? Yes, Councillor Tully? Discussion later?
I'll speak during the discussion.
Okay, thank you. There's no other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Conorton. So I'll move that the Tallagalla Cemetery Concept Design Master Plan included as attachment to be approved. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Mulligan. Um, I'll open up for discussion and as the mover, say what a, a very, it's a very considered plan. I'm very appreciative of the stakeholder engagement that has, uh, occurred. I think the design, um, emphasis and highlights the topography there, especially the, the viewing area that will be there. So I think it's a, uh, an excellent concept design. Thank you. I'll open up for other discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I support this. I think it's, um, a very historic, um, cemetery. You and I actually met there, uh, recently, of all places in the city, uh, to meet.
There are, there are nine hardings buried there.
Um, but for those people who, um, sort of got a fondness for, and there are a lot of people around who enjoy the, uh, the history of cemeteries, uh, across Australia. And I think this is a, an opportunity to recognise this. One originally, of course, in the Mortenshire up until, um, nineteen ninety-five. Uh, certainly, uh, what's been, uh, raised, uh, is that there are some headstones. They're very old. Um, they, they go back a hundred and fifty years or so. And, um, it's an opportunity to, um, partly restore those or allow primarily remains a responsibility of the families. But yes, this is a, um, for those who are into this, um, which I am, um, um, you know, various cemeteries you go to, the headstones and the information on them are fantastic. So I think this is a, a really great recommendation to the, uh, council today and that's why I fully support it.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Councillor Cornsman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank council officers for a report that is sensitive to local feeling. And as a general principle recognises that there are now more ways and preferences for what happens after we die and that this is a developing project.
Thank you. And I think it sort of very much cages for the, the growth with the extra, um, grave plots as well. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item six, is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report. Uh, may I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Graham Martin, Manager of Capital Delivery.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you very much for this. And I'm always very appreciative of the, the, the report, in particular the pictures and, and going through some of our major projects here. Um, we've always been worried about this financial year with the inflation and skills stores and construction. How are you finding things in regards to delivery and budget?
Uh, yeah, up until probably towards the end of October, we were feeling relatively comfortable with the movement in the prices. But certainly towards the end of October and now in this current month through November, we're starting to feel a little bit more of the restrictions in the market. Um, and probably what we're feeling is where you're, where you have the luxury of allowing long lead times. Our prices are not overly affected, but where we need to affect shorter timelines, the prices are being affected quite significantly. Um, and some of the examples are some of the bridge rehabilitation projects we're undertaking at the moment and have gone through the procurement process. The, um, allocated contractors are now talking six, eight and nine month delivery times for materials that would otherwise be a two or three month period. Um, I had a corridor conversation literally this morning with one of the officers and they've been advised that there's no concrete deliveries available between now and Christmas, apart from a couple of odd days at two o'clock in the afternoon. So there are things like that that are affecting the timeline. Whenever we want to try and reduce our timeline for, you know, um, important projects, then the costs are going up. I guess what we are seeing as an offset against the cost in terms of just delivering this financial year as opposed to the whole project is that because the timelines are extending, we're having a number of jobs that probably won't get completed this financial year due to the delays. So we'll have in terms of cash flow, um, probably not a negative impact, but that will just be extended over a period of time rather than any sort of a saving. I'm sorry. Hope that makes sense.
Yep. Um, in the report, you talk about the fact that one of our two asphalt, um, asphalt suppliers is unable to fill. How are we going with the, the single supplier?
Uh, single supplier again was, um, a little bit behind schedule leading up through September and October. Um, we've had a couple of meetings with them since and they've now been able to allocate some additional crews to us. So that is, um, uh, improving during this month. Um, also our procurement team are in discussions with some of the other asphalt plants that are located within the city boundaries to see if there's some availability there to tap into other existing suppliers that are not currently on the, the tender process. And we'll just see how that plays out over the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
Thank you, Miss Martin. Also thank you to the team working on the Springfield Green Bank Archery. I know that they had to stop work, tidy up for the Brisbane Lions Grand Final.
Yeah, they did.
They did a great job. It was, you know, everything was off the road, so.
It was, and actually, they were quite, you know, enthusiastic to be part of it and make sure it went well. And they're really starting to see now the work they're doing is, um, starting to take shape and impacting now and seeing the, the facility being used as well. It's starting to becoming very real for them and they're really involved with it. So it's, it's been good.
So thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councillor Ireland?
Mr. Martin, I just want to know the, um, grant money that we've got for the two replacement bridges.
Yes.
Will this affect the, when those bridges will go in?
No, it won't. No, no, the grant funding will still be allocated for that, um, for those bridges. So no, it's well within the timelines that were allocated for that bridge work, yes.
The residents out there are very excited, so I don't want to have to deliver any bad news.
No, there's no bad news. It's a little, it's longer than we would have liked, but it's certainly, in my mind, it's not bad news. It's a bit of reality of what's happening out in the market. But in terms of funding, no, that grant funding is secure and we'll, we'll complete it within the timelines.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Martin? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move that the report be received and contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Mulligan. Any discussion, comment?
Um, just, um, to you, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, when we're thinking about the risk management of the delivery of the capital program, it's something that, um, is going to become increasingly more important for us to keep our eye on. I note the report states that there is a departmental risk register which includes the delivery of the capital program. Just wondering if it might be benefit to the wider group that we have visibility over that risk register so that we have a better understanding of where we're at.
Okay.
To do a bit of a deeper dive, whether it be included as a confidential attachment in meetings moving forward or whether that can be provided by circular to the councillors within the week.
Just through you, Chair, uh, the, uh, Corporate Risk Register in its entirety, uh, is provided to the Audit and Risk Management Committee at, at each of its quarterly meetings, uh, after being reviewed on a bi-monthly basis by the Executive Leadership Team Risk Committee. So it, it's available to all councillors, um, on demand on LG Hub.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item seven, which is the Exorcist Delegation Report. Does anyone have any questions for relevant council officers on this report? The recommendation is that the Exorcist Delegation Report for the period the twenty-fourth of October twenty-two to fifteenth of November twenty-two be received and contents noted. I will move that. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you, Councillor Doyle. Any discussion on the report? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Now, may I have on to the Planning, Environment, Court Action Status Report? May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, Attorney Development Planning Manager.
Mr. Bowles, have we had any movement on our matter with Landtrac BMI and?
I'm afraid no. No, no, no updates.
No, no indication of?
No, no new information that I've received, unfortunately.
Is it, has it's happened very often, but it's been more than a year since the?
Yeah, it is common. Um, the more complex the matter, the longer the, the wait for judgment. Um, it, there's huge amount of file load work with the judges at the moment. So, um, if you speak to, um, solicitors on other matters, um, they are all anxiously waiting judgments on, on all matters that have been heard. So, um, the, the, this is a complex matter. So there, there was, was always going to be a long period of time, but even less complex matters are, are taking several months. So, um, I'll, I'll be completely honest, the delay doesn't surprise me for a second.
Um, on the one list judicial review matter, we heard anything on that?
Uh, we've had the, the hearings, um, but no, that, that'll be a little while longer too.
Nice. Um, I note the matter for cheap stays versus the council, which is that one where council refused because of, they wanted to build in a nine flood area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how was that proceeding?
Uh, very early days. So we, um, basically awaiting direction. So there hasn't been any, um, formal meetings. So we ha, we haven't been in front of the, um, registrar, for example. So, um, it, it hasn't moved forward as yet, but it will be moving forward fairly shortly. Once we've, um, um, engaged representation, then there'll be, uh, without prejudice, uh, meeting. That'll be probably the next update.
Okay. Um, the Griffith Group One, which is the childcare centre in Carowley, how was that proceeding?
Uh, yes, so we, uh, the first day of the hearing, um, there was some, some changes to the way that, that is proceeding. So the correspondents have signed settlement agreements.
All of them?
Yes, yes. So at present, council is the, um, the only party to appeal with the applicant. So there will be a council report coming on the eighth of, um, December, uh, providing some draft conditions to settle the appeal.
Okay. So when you say that the correspondents have settled, what does that mean? That there, there's been conditions changed and they're accepting of them or?
Uh, it, it basically means that they've signed a mediation agreement, which sets out their terms for settlement to occur. Or, you know, sets out things that they would like to see happen for them to be no longer, um, concerned about the proposal and no longer part of the appeal.
So does that mean that they, um, uh, now agree with the childcare centre proceeding?
Essentially, um, with conditions as agreed through their mediation agreement. So they, they, they will have their own, um, requirements to sat, be satisfied with the, the arrangement. Um, I can't say for a fact that they, uh, agree with it, but they've, as far as the, the matter in front of the court is concerned, um, they're no longer being part of the appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Bowles? Yes, Councillor Tully?
Yeah, just, uh, note your comments about the delay and that is, uh, obviously true, that the more complex a particular matter is, the longer it's likely to take. But there's one that's been sitting here in Division Two for some time, in fact, nine months. Um, that's, that's the appeal from Spring Lake Holdings. And it was just a preliminary point on a jurisdictional matter. That's nine months.
Yes.
Since, um, yeah, that, um, um, hearing. So, um, uh, to me, that's a considerable time. And I'll make some further comments during the point of the discussion about that. Generally, not that specific one, but, but generally about the delays in the Planning and Environment Court.
For, for that particular matter, I, I do agree that that has been a long time. Um, the hearing was quite a long time ago. It was, um, fairly specific point. It wasn't to the level of complexity of dealing with a whole merits based appeal for three things. So, um, yeah, it, it does surprise me that that has taken that long, but unfortunately, that's an indicator of the environment that we're in with the length of time for these judgments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Bowles? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll move that the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Tully. I have that for discussion. I think, Councillor Tully, you would like to?
Yeah, th, these delays, you know, some of them go on for a considerable period of time and, and perhaps it's a matter for the government to consider, um, the appointment of, um, additional judges to the Planning and Environment Court. Because whether it's simply a short point, uh, such as that one on Spring Lake Holdings about a, uh, preliminary jurisdictional matter or a more complex matter, that affects communities about developments where there are appeals and reviews before the court. So there is a meeting of the Local Government Policy Executive next week. I will raise that to canvass, um, the views of other councils in Queensland who may be experiencing, uh, similar delays, uh, to see if there's merit in approaching the government at, at the peak level of local government to have, um, um, additional judge or judges appointed to the Planning and Environment Court. Because with the more the development and the, uh, economy starting to, you know, move in another direction and the, particularly in developing areas where councils get, um, you know, many, many applications, there will be more appeals. And I think we just need to be on the front foot to ensure that the decisions are made quickly in relation to any appeals to the Planning and Environment Court.
Thank you for making that representation, Councillor Tully. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Uh, I don't have any notices of motion unless there are any. Uh, matters arising, I have none. I have no procedural matters and formal matters. Um, so the meeting is, um, is closing at nine forty-one. I am, thank you. And the next one's in ten minutes' time. Thank you.